And we have a course.
We don't.
Quinn coming?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably, you know, I I know it's a little snowy out like the Nori has a cross country ski race of Dewey and the King gets came along because I guess the cascade. He's gotta come through there, so.
Yeah.
Work, so we'll see if we see him.
Janet will be on the TV and so will Jackie.
Hello.
It's like a silver.
All the all the brightest minds.
My first.
Wow.
That was just. Good. Can you do one across the world for the town logo?
Sure.
Do you do many? Oh, I saw it. Okay.
Well, there's it's gonna be our first round.
Okay, like to open a public hearing. We'll start Cindy leading us to the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republi- for which it stands, one nation under God, in the.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, on behalf of the village, I will open this public hearing.
On behalf of the town in North Elba, I also.
And Anita, if you could read the notice.
Sure. Please take notice that the village board of the village of Lake Placid and the town board of the town of North Elba will hold a joint public hearing on a proposed local law to amend the joint village of Lake Placid Town of North Elba land use code. On Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four at five P M in the town of North Elba Town Hall, first floor meeting room, twenty six ninety three Main Street, Lake Placid, New York, and via Zoom video conferencing. Log in information will be provided on the town village website. The proposed local law would amend the land use code to make several administrative clarifications and corrections and to provide regulations for adult use onsite cannabis consumption, adult use retail cannabis dispensaries and smoke shops and tobacco tobacco vape stores, only allowing such uses as conditional uses in village center, gateway corridor, and old northern road districts. The complete text of the proposed local law is available for inspection by any interested person on the joint town and village website, H T T P S colon slash slash northelba dot village of Lake Placid dot N Y dot gov. All interested persons are invited to attend the public hearing and will be given an opportunity to be heard. Sign Anita.
Jackie, can you hear them? I can't.
Jackie, could you hear us? Yes.
Yes, I could hear you.
Thank you.
Janet must be on your end. Oh, you can't hear.
So right last time we just put the hearing.
Well, Jackie, you definitely got best background.
Where is she going anywhere?
She's home.
She's doing her frozen.
She's out now. There's not even a member of the president.
Sidney? Maybe.
No, I'm good. I asked Erica yesterday.
Did I get any of them right?
I think so. No, it's fun to you know, I I have me, I have a couple of corrections, but I'll do it up. I don't have to do a public thing. That's fine.
I think she's gonna try to log back in.
There.
Val. Yeah. Isn't Val? Um, I think. No, Lori's not here.
Janet, can you hear us now?
Did you have a.
I got it now. I rebooted.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, there's been no comments so far, Janet.
I can get to this very quick. It has to be actually broke my record. I think she was right here on like a lot of them.
We received that. Yeah, we have.
I feel like I've seen.
I can.
I wonder maybe when we knew it was in December, and that's why I just don't remember.
Is this the law?
No, this is the development commission. Do you remember since?
But, you know. I had to do the warrants, so I make sure I brought my. If I get through a lot of things. I made a. Here's a. Doctor Garrison's now. Oh, yeah, didn't know that your best. Oh, really?
So we just. And then Tim can go home.
How many years ago did that?
Yeah, nobody's gonna say anything.
The year we moved back.
Janet usually has people like ten or fifteen. But that's obviously up to all of you.
Anita? Anita, do you hear from Val? Isn't she supposed to come in and do the?
She is. I haven't directly heard from her. I only heard secondhand that she was coming.
She's at five thirty, but I could be mistaken.
We can go right to the whole agenda. So you won't have to.
These guys are.
Five thirty, she's coming?
Jason, I think dog sleds around the.
I didn't hear directly.
Well, you know, I did hear it was like two and three inches high, so they should be out there by now.
The line was.
I was gonna say something earlier.
I don't think they can go out.
No.
Number one, Main Street is still.
Oh, no, yeah, that's pretty. Gonna be a bad. Oh, right from the practice area or the holding tank. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what?
That's.
We're suspecting. It's the first year. We don't know.
We're hoping that these things at the toboggan shoot allows us to have more ice. Because it's less going out.
Okay, very good.
That's a theory.
Yeah, never know. It was Josh did. You guys see that? Cartoon about that. There's a great big roll of duct tape and sear plate all wrapped up. That should take care of it.
Tim, how are you?
Tim is always.
I have a useful thing to eat up some time. If you want, if the boards want to uh to discharge their responsibility on the seeker. We've already submitted a part one of an E A F. Now in part two, there are eleven questions that you have to determine. The answer would be no impact or small impact. Is it okay for a reading?
Yes.
And this is for it's it's for the state environmental quality review act for a local law for a local law. And this won't take long. Will the proposed that and so they'll only speak up if you think that there would be a moderate to large impact on one of these. The the proposed action will not create a material conflict with the existing land use plan or zoning. I think now we're working with it. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land? I submit that that is no impact as well. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
People will speak up.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation opportunities? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Uh, or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Almost done. Will the proposed action compare the quality or character of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or damage problems? And finally, will it pose action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? So you see those questions have have some relevance when when the review board is 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 reviewing land use projects. They don't really have much relevance here and each board should at some point prior to adoption, should enact a resolution for a negative declaration on the seeker.
But we should close the public hearing before we do that, okay?
Uh, we're definitely. Yeah, right up there, probably, yeah. That's the right.
Yeah. Do we need to wait until quarter after? Do you think since nobody is here, no one is online, can we close the public hearing?
Well, what did the notice say?
They could.
Then it started at five.
Yeah, we didn't put up any time.
Okay, but are the board meeting is going to start at five fifteen, right?
Yes.
So I think you that implied that the public hearing would close and the board meeting would start. So unfortunately, maybe four more minutes.
Okay, my fault. I asked, right? Actually, pretty funny. So town hall blocks is your team.
Are you gonna propose a resolution in your meeting today to accept this law after we close? Cause I won't. It was that was the plan, but I don't know because of what Tim is saying, it's.
It's optional, you know, but the secret resolution, the negative declarations resolution should precede adoption of the law. It doesn't have to be denied, but that resolution is based on the uh part one, part two of the E A F. That's the sequence.
All right. So once we close the public hearing, we open our meeting. Uh, cause it is our second item on the agenda. Have you stated? We will take this that you everyone did a really good job with this, and that's why nobody is here to ask questions.
It was so long ago. I don't remember.
Still giving you credit. Good job. Got some page exposure.
For now. Depends on people prepping. Has there been any word about any onsite licenses coming through?
Just the one in Saranac, the only one I know.
Saranac. Oh, really?
They have one open.
I don't think it's an onsite. It just.
Spencer and Starbuck's on onsite consumption because the village proved it by like the boaters did by one vote in the town.
And we said.
You know.
The last time we interviewed the owner of the one in Saranac Lake, he said that in the future they're looking at onsite, so maybe the future, but right now it doesn't.
So there's there's not whether it be two different licenses or can they that license and then I guess I should.
I think it's two different.
Yeah, I think it's two different.
There's I think there's twenty two licenses and so.
Right here?
No, no. No, sorry. There's twenty two kinds of cannabis through the cannabis central award. I think there are twenty two license types. And one of them being onsite, one of them being dispensary, one of them being like grow, one of them is being a combination of two of those three things. I think it's twenty two licenses.
Okay, and being no one else to have any questions and no one online, on behalf of the village, I will close this public hearing.
And on behalf of the town of North Elba, I close this public hearing.
Thank you very much, all of you. At this point, then we will open up the village board meeting. And we will start with item A, which is regular board meeting minutes from January second. Do I have a motion to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
Very much that passes. And then Tim, if you could instruct us on the procedures for I and D, which is the closing law number one.
If the village board wishes to adopt the local law, it should first pass a resolution that that on the basis of the part one information of the E A F and part two impact analysis, the negative answers to all those questions, the board adopts a negative declaration for purposes of seeker.
Someone like to make that motion?
A motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
And now and now you would proceed to to entertain a motion to adopt the local law. And then you would have completed your doings. I'll carry through Anita and such as to filings.
Good. Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the local law.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Am I excused?
We love that we stay. See you in church. If I could just interrupt our schedule right now, we have Val here to talk to the whole building in town. Would you like to come up here or stay there? Whatever makes you happy.
Here is fine. I guess it looks a little crowded. And I have to say the whole issue with the times. I was told five thirty and I look, I said, I better just check to make sure on the website at like five up and it said five for this, so I ended up panicking.
You're you're timing. We just kept going with other items, but it's.
Um, yeah, so Lori sent Sir Lagarde units away on business and and would be the one presenting our year end report as our chair. Um, I know you all have a copy of this, correct? So it's really just a matter of going through here and I'll I'll briefly touch on them. And then if you have some questions, I may or may not be able to. Um, so you see who are our our current membership is listed here. Um, I don't want to read that through that for you. Um, and we just talked about our priorities continue to be open space, government efficiency, community, resources, and facilities, housing, and economic development, environment, and sustainability, and mobility. So those are things outlined by the comprehensive plan that we we're that we're looking at. Our goals for next this coming year or the current year, I should say, is to continue working on the comprehensive plan update and we've also the dark skies committee is really gotten a lot of momentum and we're giving a lot of support to that. So that that's something exciting. We're looking at for this year. Um, we also want to increase obviously the engagement as much as we can with both boards. And we're all constantly looking to engage the community and recruit more members. So we do have some new members, so that's kind of exciting too. Um, for the past year, uh, the comprehensive plan steering committee, um, we submitted R P, um, reviewed submissions and the process is underway and hopefully will be done by the end of the year. I don't have a lot more detail than what's on on the report here. You can ship questions, but the housing committee is is still working away to work at public and private partnerships and the deep restrictions, which I know Emily, you do been doing a lot of work on it to give us sure things, correct?
Yes.
And then moving on to the appearance committee, there's a lot of things that fall under that. You can see the multi board art of love, education, watershed, the park department, um, and then business association and the boards. So uh, we did a lot of work on Teddy Bear Park in this past year, coming up with recommendations that we submitted for improvements. The fence was one one issue. Um, and then but additional things are more playground equipment, making something of an age friendly section, maybe with chess or checkered or someplace. So there's a little more to do in the park for everybody. So we we looked at things like that. Um, and and hopefully we'll get to work on some of those this year. Um, but we did submit that earlier this year, uh, in twenty twenty three. Um, we provided recommendations for signage, including electronic board in the municipal pot, so that could be updated more easily. Um, and then one thing we spent a lot of time on was the recommendations for the beach fencing, which has gone away because we believe we don't need to do the beach fencing anymore, but we've spent a lot of time looking into possibilities for that and and options and what would be what would be nice looking and and still serve a service function. So um, Community Day, Community Day keeps growing. It was last year was our best year yet and which I feel like I say that every year, so that's good. Um, attendance grew. Um, one thing that was really great was we reengaged order. Um, they've got a representative back on the committee and they're really committed to participating in it because we sort of lost their involvement for a while. They were we're dealing with these two. So but it was nice to get them reengaged and want to be part of part of the community. So um, one thing we did this year too that was new was we marched in the parade, which was really fun. Uh, we've not done that before. I usually am kidding, so I've never been able to do it, but and it was last minute, but it was really fun. So we're gonna try to keep doing that um each year. Um, the arts alliance, um, we made some progress too. Um, you know, I know you've all seen that the mural, the beach art that was done in front of the beach house. Um, we that actually started as a project up by Teddy Bear Park, which is also referenced later in the. But we we got that done. We have requests out. We have two places, two locations that are looking at doing public art. One is the Golden Arrow and one is one is the Grand Adirondack Hotel. Um, we have requests out for Golden Arrow to artists and we are also looking, um, we've been looking at the space at Grand Adirondack. That one's not as far along and in the process. It's a little they're a little stall right now due to funding and trying to figure out upon those things and also make sure we want to make sure everything's in place so that as these go up or if they go up, it doesn't trigger people to say, hey, I can paint whatever I want on the side of my building. We want to make sure that we coordinate with both boards to to keep to get regulations, something in place so so we can regulate it. It goes either through the arts alliance or through um, review or the boards. So we are we are conscious of that and we are working on that.
It's gonna be something somewhere so well.
Yeah.
Cause that's that's amazing. And I always think I drive by my.
I know. I know. And it's really the goal and I and obviously I had some and I was able to get some ideas on what it costs them. And it and it was a sizable amount. So funding is always an issue and that's what our issue is with arts alliance is that we don't have a lot of funding in place. We're looking at grants, grant sources and things like that. But that's really the um what's going to drive this. I I believe just the prep alone of the wall and the surface you have to do before you even paint was like twenty thousand, I think, if I remember correctly. So um, so those are some of the things you have to figure out. Um, and maybe maybe we start with something smaller like the little pocket ones that could be done for, you know, on a smaller scale, smaller funding. Um, so we're looking at all of those things and I guess type three, I think that a mural is be nice to sip some of that here. And so we're 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 working working on that one as well. So oh, and the third thing we were to the art alliance was doing was working on the electric cauldron and what needs, you know, what part we could play in helping to renovate that. And I think we went out to look for vendor estimates on it to deal with a seal. Um, Jackie may may recall where we were at that step. I think we got a little stalled on finding somebody that could actually work with the seal. Um, I had somebody in Vermont that I thought maybe able to do it, but that contact didn't pan out. So we're still working working on that. And that would be an effort, I assume, with order and and the towns, it's on town property, but we were here to offer whatever assistance we can with that.
Val, sorry to interrupt, but keep a note that the town has already allocated twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For courage restoration.
Sure. Yeah. And I think, yeah, I think that's our notes and um, and and like I said, I think it's just been a little stall at this point, but we'll we'll get that back up and running and see where we are with that. But I know that it's gonna be, um, I think it's gonna be pretty sizable to do that. So I'm sure, but it's. Um, the lead certification is still, if were there any more questions? So the lead certification is still um in process. Um, I think we were getting so we were trying to pin down exactly what metrics and data we need. We did have the Clarkson students come and work on that and do a presentation in one of our meetings. So they so I think that's just the one process at this point. The Clarkson students are working on um, getting all of that together so we can get it submitted. Um, moving on to dark skies. So this was a relatively, this is a relatively new committee. Um, and it's actually something that I know Georgia Jones has been pushing for a long time, so it's nice to see that it's got some some traction now. It's a very engaged committee. Um, they've gotten a lot of work done already. So and the only addition I have to what's on here on a report is they have they're circulating their operating principles amongst their own group. Little review. They talked about it in their last meeting and they got it drafted and they just sent it out and it's in circulation within the committee. And they'll get so they're in the process of finalizing that. So, um, so that that's that's pretty cool. That that's like I said, that's a really useful city. They've got a lot of. So that will be as soon as we get their operation plan, we'll work with that. Um, and since it is on towards the end, it's on, there's a request to make that a standing committee. And then we have the court restructure study group. Um, that's all that committee is also working. And I believe they were supposed to be making a recommendation this month. I don't know if that's the title. Okay, straight.
Or at least for the village.
And then have they done it for the town? Yeah. And then the childcare committee. Um, that's been making a lot of progress too, and I believe that was. Sorry. Um, I know there's been a lot of work on, um, we've been talking about putting together a survey to really assess what people need in the community for childcare. Um, and there's, um, the committee's been meeting with the regional offices and other providers. the regional offices and other providers just to get more input. So hopefully we'll get get something going with that pretty soon. Katie, do you have any more information on that? I know you've been working a lot on that one.
Yeah, Emily and Derek have been on it too. So I think where my understanding where they left off and jump in is that there's now like a kind of draft survey in place trying to understand and assess the scale of the need. And then the idea is to use that then to to sort of nail down and and where we go next and that there's a plan now in place for how to distribute that and such. I think that was on that one.
Yeah, I think it's finalized with Roost right now. If I check my email tomorrow, I will get that. And then we're working with Roost. We'll get it touched out.
That'll be, that'll be a good one. I know that's such an amazing.
I think on that one, one of the things that Emily, I think you found from talking to folks in Keene that are tied, that they and actually going through the survey is great for assessing needs and getting the numbers around that. But actually, it also was an opportunity to find people who might be interested in actually working for one of the providers. So I think that's that's one of the very exciting elements of that is that it's it's a bit of a chance for dialogue.
Great. All right. So that's the year in review. It was a busy year. And then our initiative, proposed initiatives for 2024 to continue work on the comprehensive plan. And get that updated, the open space, we want to evaluate the updates and improvements to Teddy Bear and Milk Palm Parks. Parks are a big push. And then work with the the tree board, it needs to be, I think, a little bit re-energized. So we're going to help support that. And it's just sort of a planning process for open spaces. I know, and we've been asked to help a little bit. And I know there's a a planning group for the Porsha grounds to come up with a master plan for that. So we'll provide whatever support we can for that as well. The public art, as I mentioned, as part of the recommendations for Teddy Bear Park, there was some street art proposed up there, which we switched to down here by the beach house just because of the scope. So we're going to revisit that. We also want to do something in the paved walkway with maybe some interactive games, hopscotch, things like that that used to see in kids' playgrounds, play areas, and just make it part of that walkway. So it's not just a slab of of pavement and make it something useful. So that's on the on the list too. And then we are going to confirm the mural project, I guess, with Grand Adirondack Hotel, get that one. We have identified this space and we'll continue to work on that and send out, get the requests sent out to the artists. And then we also wanted to look at sculptural aspects too. So and so we're going to figure out doing, getting a call out for sculpture. And again, that would obviously be we would coordinate with the town and village to see what what we can and can't do for sculptures. Government efficiency, we're going to, where the court restructuring recommendations presented, that was scheduled for January.
The village of January.
And town is coming up.
Another question.
We lost Dean, he went in prison.
Oh, right, right. That's right.
We got him just before, so I'm sure he's back in the state.
All right. And then again, we're going to support the, give what support we can for the daycare and childcare survey. And then continue to grow and develop Community Day. We're actually looking at a rain site for this year. We've gotten big enough that we need one. And we have one, we have one sort of sorted out, but there's some logistics to work out with the so we're still working on that. And then the Housing Committee still needs a chair. So I know they're still working to to try to find somebody. I can't understand why nobody wants to take that on. But hopefully, hopefully we'll get a a chair for that committee. And the deed restriction program is is continuing. Emily, is there any you wanted to comment?
Yeah, the deed restriction program, our most recent update was that we approached a nonprofit organization in the area to be a partner based on some recommendations from legal counsel and just the efficiency of implementing the program. And we're waiting for some feedback from the nonprofit to see if they will, they're willing to take the program on.
And now that we, so now with, now that Adam DeSantis is here, is the Economic Development Director. That's another piece to loop in as far as the housing goes. So we're we're going to continue to work with housing options. And then another goal is to get the lead certification finished, which as I said earlier, is in process. And we'd like to establish this Dark Skies Committee as a standing committee of the Development Commission. And while work towards getting that certification done for that too. Mobility, that that's been a topic that's been on the plate for a while and we hope to continue and get some more progress done. That would be sidewalks, transportation, things like that. So I know there's been work on on expanding sidewalks in the town and village. So we'll continue on that. And then the other recommended initiatives is we'd like to get the Events Committee reestablished because there seems to be some communication issues again. And it'd be nice to be able to coordinate a little bit better. So with the events, you get the Events Committee reestablished, that would help with that. And then just need to work on the community plans and and then the other one was this exploring options of community bonds or cleanup group. This was an interesting idea brought up in one of the meetings. And we, because the subject of eyesore buildings, things like that had come up. And one of the things that was mentioned is some people aren't able to to do some of their cleanup. A tree needs to come down or bushes need to be trimmed. And and then an example of a community that had put together a group that will go out and help people, you know, if they're elderly, they can't do that on their own. In, they, there's a community that's got a group that will that will go out and do that. Sort of like Phil used to do with plowing, right? We had a group that would go out and plow for people that couldn't manage it. So we thought that would be a good idea to explore. And see if we can get some people involved to do that, just to help with, like I said, the larger projects that some people might not be able to handle on their own. So that's that's on our list to follow up with. And then I think that's pretty much it for, except for the appointments, the requests for appointments and the the Standing Committee. So the terms that are expiring are Lori Fitzgerald, myself and Kathleen. So we're asking to be reappointed with the caveat that we haven't actually been able to get a reply from Kathleen. We've reached out to her a couple of times. So we're, we've still got her on. I know she's been busy with some other, some other issues. So we've got her on here. And we'll request an appointment, but we're not we have, like I said, we haven't actually been able to get her a cell reply if she wants to truly to continue. But I don't want to cut her out if she if she wants to continue. So and then John Winkler is a new a new member and he is Chair of the Dark Skies Committee. So we asked that those appointments be made. And we asked that that Dark Skies Committee be made as designated as a standing committee of the commission. And you can see the appointments and inclusion appointments of those listed on the break.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. We will take the matter of the term expirations and Dark Sky Committee and we get it to our membership to go through a workshop and bring it up in the next meeting.
Okay. And if we, and we'll continue to reach out to to Kate. And if we get a reply from her one way or the other before next meeting.
Thanks for all the work. With the with the art and murals, you said the Golden Arrow and the Grand Adirondack. How, is that an application process?
Yeah. So what we did was, I think a call went out and I believe some of the Art Center contacts. And we, and a call went out to see if there was interest. And then we received input back. And I think that's being, I believe that's being managed actually through the Art Center website. And it's it's designated as an arts alliance, but they have the means to do it and and the outreach to do it. So, yeah. And so that's who we got responses from.
Thank you.
And just a quick note on the Comprehensive Plan, there's quite extensive kind of public engagement. Part of that was here. But I, you know, I think that that's, we talked about it, but I think it's a great chance for us to kind of fire any questions that we have about, you know, kinds the longer-term community vision and preferences through that group. So I think it'd be great just to stay close to that.
Yeah.
Putting your key tabs and these little groups and questions, which they can start to form.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point.
I think it'll just happen. So the small and large decisions that we have to make about how things look or, you know, like thinking about some of the signage at the beach. It's just having a temperature check on some of the community preferences around those things can be really helpful to be able to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks again. You guys can say if you want.
I know, I want Jackie to see me so she can smile.
Andrew, I could see your bald head.
I think just to summarize where we were with item M is regular proposed, their last workshop, I mean, what you wanted for Empire State Games, those parking lots. I don't believe there's any I mean, I think we're all on board with what you presented. Is that right? Jackie?
Yes.
Yeah. So I don't know if you want to say anything more or just be happy or just going to pass it.
Well, since you just brought it up, we might as well.
So we know we had an issue with the big Adirondack chairs during the World University Games. We got those, we got those shorted out. And there was a nice element that we, one thing I forgot to add is that that whether we can use them, put in place at the you know.
They're in the same, but it's up to Janet.
Well, I I think it's if you reinforce the arms, you have push for this now, we initially shared.
Well, the board, the board is probably aware of the fact that we got sued by the lady who allegedly got injured when the arm broke and she fell off the chair. So I I think you'll have to be super diligent in what those reinforcements are. And also, as as everybody in the room knows, the question always comes up of what insurance do you have?
We will have to get, obviously, we have a statute of insurance that we present to you. I don't know if we have an ongoing one, but Empire State Games will send send one. That's part of the whole deal.
Greg, who who is Empire State Games? I mean, that is not a real entity, I don't believe.
Well, that's that's the event that's operated by the Adirondack Sports Council, Janet.
Okay, so the insurance is is Adirondack Sports Council Insurance insuring this event?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So, you know, the board, you have to know what your comfortability is with the chairs, their structure. You know, if it's, unfortunately, if it's snowy, icy, whatever. The other issue was, I think, people have to climb up to get on them and climb or jump down. I don't know what your level of comfortability is with with the access and egress out of those chairs, especially if it's slippery, but.
You would have an opinion?
Yeah, can't we, can't we put it on order property? Put all the chairs on order property.
We ask order first, as we used to.
Just do it. Isn't that what you always do? Just do it.
But those are the town part of that lot too.
Yeah, the south end.
Greg, how many chairs did you want to put out?
We're looking at two, Jackie.
We have Brad look at those chairs and even Darcy.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yep. And Darcy for code to make sure that they're up to everything, Janet.
I don't know if the building code code covers those chairs. I would doubt it does.
I would hope so. We've got the engineering.
But then if 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 we make Brad responsible, I mean, then all of a sudden we all.
Yeah, it's still going back and forth between us and the sports council over the previous lawsuit. So I'm a little iffy on that.
Well, Janet, is your advice then that we not allow this year just because of the lawsuit or that we make sure they're reinforced and that we're insured to the sports council?
My advice is that the board has to take everything into consideration and make a decision on whether you think it's a risk that you want to take. When I saw the plans, you know, there's a, there's other risks, it looks like in the plans, you know, if that lose run, which is always fun but risky, comes to fruition, who knows what the weather will be. Maybe the board is going to decide that, you know, there's a lot of other neat things and you don't need those chairs. I mean, there are some private businesses now that have those chairs. Let them have them.
Yeah, I'm I'd be happy to withdraw the chairs and we'll see if Orta to reject with ex-employee.
You know, put put the chair in in for opening ceremonies.
Exactly, right in front of the entrance. Yeah.
And then maybe put one in front of the conference center where they get shoveled and the snow melts. I mean, I put them in areas that are, and especially the one in front of the main entrance, it's snow covered. So, I mean.
We'll ask Chad and Ashley and whatever, if they'll let us put them in there. So take that off our list. Also, we can take Luge off our list because it turns out that Luge is not going to happen because Gordy's taking the sleds to New Hampshire, Massachusetts anyway, so we won't have any access to. So I thought I already killed that, but maybe.
And and does, board, do you know the I learned this term from the FISU Games, the run of show when the load in and load out is happening. And so when that lot actually has to be closed, I know it's not exactly the day of and it, you're probably going to need it, Greg, a day or two or in advance and needed a day or two after to dismantle it.
Exactly. Yeah, we requested it for Wednesday afternoon, starting Wednesday afternoon for installation, Wednesday and Thursday to to construct the stage and and install the tents. And then we would be out, we were not operating the Athlete Village on Sunday, so Sunday is a teardown day. So we'll have it returned to you on Monday morning. In a hurry. No, we will have it returned.
You know, it should be noted that that south end of the parking lot, the property is actually owned by the town of North Elba. The village operates the parking under an agreement with the town. So when you get your insurance, you should probably have the village named as an additional insured as well as the town because they're the landowner.
Okay. And does the Crown, does the Vacation Corp involved at all or no?
I think they own that little triangle, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But yes, they have some ownership interest down in that area.
Okay, so we we will add them as well.
You know, Greg, actually, they own the parking lot area that the town doesn't own.
Okay. So yes. Whatever that is, we'll just.
I think that's like Classic Vacation Corp.
Yeah. Yeah. We will make sure they're included. And I know for Ironman, we've had each, each name. So we'll add Sergey, Caroline, Arthur, Trina and.
Company.
Christina. Yep.
Do I have a motion to accept the Empire State Game, Sergey?
I think one of the other questions that, that we had before was just about alternate parking, just because it's going to be busy. And whether or not there then it'd be any kind of like arrangements or, you know, if you'd had any conversations with the Lucys or others, just about opening up some of the, the kind of like overflow parking in town that have been used.
Yeah, we have not, but we can absolutely reach out to them and see. Um, I, I don't know if we've done that in the past. We must have done the best. We, for the opening ceremony, we're using the high school lot.
Yeah.
For handicap parking. So, but we don't have anything.
The only other time was during the world university.
Yeah. Yeah. For other events, I think, or the Empire State Games.
So should we request West Valley? Is that what you'd like us to do? Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
He wants Jackie's, that he wants, we're asking about requesting the additional parking. So we request.
Sled hockey?
No, just for, for, to replace the parking spots we're losing because of the athlete village.
Um, you should talk to Orta.
All right.
I mean, people are not going to park down in the West Valley lot and walk to the Empire State Games events. You know, some, most, a lot of those events are not in the village center. With exception of the events that are at the arena. So those people all go out to their venues. Maybe they're around during registration and festivities at night and, but I don't think it's anything different than a normal Can-Am weekend. Well, it would be the opening ceremonies on Thursday. And then when is sled hockey? Sled hockey Sunday?
In the rest of it's in Tupper Lake.
The finals, right? The finals are Sunday. Yeah.
I think the sled hockey issue was the parking for the opening ceremony because those are the majority of the adaptive athletes.
So in there in the U S lot?
No, in the teacher's lot.
Okay. Because Greg, there is an issue with Orta not having any handicap parking for. Any events. For any events.
Right. And that's why we asked the school for their spots, you know, teachers parking lot.
And, and I don't think for this, what you're talking about, the village is probably not thinking it's a great idea to designate handicap parking for all those spaces in front of the arena.
Yeah, we took that off the table once we got to high school lot. So maybe we'll ask for a, last high school if Sunday after, if Sunday during sled hockey, if we can use those handicap spots as well. That's a good call.
I think the flag request is being wrapped up in this request. As per workshop conversation.
Good. Okay. Any other questions?
No. I made a motion that we approve the Empire State Winter Games requests with the amended proposals. So we took out the Luge run.
Subject to receiving the appropriate insurance certificate.
That's what you said, Lucas. Yes. Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And then that brings us into the Ironman request. And from my understanding, it's basically the exact same thing as last year.
Exact same thing as last year. As a celebration of the 25th anniversary, maybe some things that come on, but well, obviously as they develop and back to the question.
Okay.
And you are back with.
And I'm back as a basically, some of the contact question.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, maybe.
Congratulations.
And I don't.
Does anybody have any questions?
On the record, congratulations.
Does anyone have any questions, Greg?
No.
Okay. Motion.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for getting that in.
Items C, D, E, F, G. We group those all together? Do we need an individual?
No, no, I think Janet usually first individually, like it, it's a bunch of separate change orders, Janet.
Yes, I think you ought to adopt them separately.
Okay.
Because it's financial.
Okay. Is there any questions on any of those or anything anyone would like to say, Mindy beforehand or?
Mostly pain. A lot of pain.
All right.
Everything, Lars.
If that's the case, then let's start with item C, change order number eight A. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Item D, water treatment plant, change order number 11, a motion. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Item E, water treatment plant, change order number 12.
So moved.
All. Second. All in favor?
I didn't watch.
Item F, uh, change order number 13.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
We can, this one's.
G, uh, change order number 14.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Approval, knowledge of interest in bipartisan infrastructure, law funding.
So we got bill money for the wastewater treatment plant and the amount of $3 million, $26,000. Um, we also got a match in further, further financing for the same amount. And this is just acknowledging that, yes, we are interested in receiving that money, but we can use it towards the wastewater treatment.
And this authorizes the assigned, that effect is. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Done again.
Five minutes. Should I slow down or keep going? Employee handbook updates. We've all seen those in the workshop. Any questions? A motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Item J, water department employee raises.
Art, can you go back one second, please? I'm sorry. To the additions to the handbook. Uh, how are the, are those going to be? Uh, are we going to print a new handbook or are we going to have the handbook with this being an insert? And how is it going to be distributed to the employees?
So I think as of right now, it's going to be an insert and we'll send it out to the employees. There's additional changes to the handbook that we want made. And all of those changes will go to Alon, right?
Yep.
So that their legalese can look over them and make sure that we're not doing anything wrong. And then at that point, all the new additions will get added at the same time. So we're not going to print it because we're going to have to reprint it anyways.
But, but I think it is important that it is distributed to the employees and normally don't they have to sign something that says they've received it?
Yep. And we'll have an acknowledgement drawn up so that they can sign.
Yeah, you're, you're going to have to do that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Janet, is there stipulation about what form? So can it, can it be in electronic form?
That they, for us, it's actually easier not to be because we don't have everybody on email. Like some people, we just have their private emails. So yeah, we generally.
Just do our copies.
Yeah.
Um, item J is water department employee raises. We discussed those in the workshops. A motion on that or any questions?
I make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item K, Adarondack Association of Towns and Villages, 2024 dues. That's how much?
$100.
Yep. A second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. And item Y, Adarondack Park Local Government Review Board Agreement, 2024. Another hundred dollars.
300.
300.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And we'll be bringing it to the next workshop, but they've sent us an email April, do you remember the dates?
I don't, but.
But we'll get those to you. And then if anyone wants to go, be there. Okay. Anything else come from the clerk?
Uh, just a couple of small things. Justin has two travel requests. Actually, the first one is even travel. It's an online course through North Country Community College. That there is zero cost to it. 60 hours Tuesday and Thursday evenings for Fire Officer One, New York State OFPC.
And that's for?
For, I believe just for Justin.
Needed as part of his continuing.
Motion, I make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
And his other one is Northern Adarondack Educational Code Enforcement Conference. That's March 4th through 7th in the Cambria right here. Uh, so the cost of the attendance is $470.
I make the motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the only other thing was that usually we officially receive the report that Val gave tonight. So should we do that just to sort of?
Just, just to say that we received this?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And then you've got that for us to talk about.
Those names for the committees. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And treasure report affidavit, uh, warrant affidavit number 12, very much marked. If I have a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else from treasury?
No.
Much, anything under new business?
Yeah. I'm going to be sending you out a document from the development, from, from the, God, I can't remember what it's called. Oh my God. The new, the new comprehensive plan. So this is questionnaires that they're using to start the conversations and they want to go live with it on Thursday. So I'll send this out just as a review, just so you know what the basic questions are. These, these questions, there's probably about, God, maybe 15, 20, um, you know, that just identifies the demographic of the person who is answering the questionnaire. Clarkson students are going to be handling this. Um, just so you know, and I'll, I'll get them out to you this after, tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Anything else under new business? Anything under old business?
Old business is just Mindy sent us something about from the Union for Police. Have you ever, did you ever hear any?
As it stands right now, um, everybody is in agreeance. They're just bringing it in front of the rest of the membership of the PBA. It will go back to the attorney and Brian is on the radar for tomorrow morning. Because I haven't heard from him about that.
Thank you.
So yeah, things are, are very, 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 very loved.
Okay, minute.
All parties are. Yes, our, our parties are happy right now.
A lot.
A lot when it comes to that.
And then I guess, you know, it's not old business. We had a fire last night. They could save the building. So I don't know enough. I talked to Justin early, but he was going, he was tired and going to a meeting. So I will get the rest of them to know.
Yeah, Mike showed up at our meeting. I don't think he's been to bed yet. Obviously a big thank you to all those involved with the fire department, the volunteers and the water department. Okay. Um, anything else under old business? Okay. I've got nothing under mayor. How about commissioner reports?
I put mine out there on the other.
Yes, that's good. That's what I like to do too. Public comments?
I public.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is nature. Good. I make a motion to adjourn.
No.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very much. To the next meeting. Thank you, Sydney.